Thanks for upstaging me, I appreciate it. We'll talk on this this week. Alright, so thank you, thanks for inviting me. I'll try to keep this brief, I know we got a busy agenda today. So I'm here to present the state of the school for Arcadia High School for this school year. My pleasure, good work. There we go, so just real quick, you guys should be familiar with this information, but this is a breakdown of our demographics, of our student population. We started this school year around 719, but now we're sitting at 701. And that fluctuates, you know, weekly, but that's kind of where we've been at for the last couple of years. And you can see our breakdown. I'm proud to say that we're a pretty diverse school. Our demographics are almost split right down, a third, a third, a third, which I think is pretty unique. And we're proud of that, and we try to celebrate that on a regular basis. It also takes its help, I think it helps us, just preparing our kids for the real world. Because the real world, you know, is very diverse. And giving our kids an opportunity when they decide to leave the shore, if they do decide to leave the shore, how to be able to navigate that. So building those skills at the high school level, I think, is extremely important. Our kids have a great job doing that. We are on a four-by-four block schedule at the high school level, so we take, you know, four classes the first semester, we do four classes the second semester. So we have two testing windows that take place in the course of the school year. So if you can look, we do have our fall testing data, which happens, you know, in that first semester. And then we're getting ready to go into our spring testing season, which is the second group of data that has not been determined yet, short of the English writing. But as you can see, the fall testing data, we performed fairly well. We're kind of pleased with where we're at. There's two numbers under the writing, because we have a raw test score or data score for the SOLs. But then we also have the work keys, which is an alternative test that some of our students take and succeed at. So you can see, and those count as a replacement for the SOLs. So you can see where we are, pretty high there in English writing, which is a testament to my English department, grades nine through twelve, they do a phenomenal job preparing the kids. And they even make sure those kids are in that graduation requirement by the time they get to that twelfth grade. A couple things I just want to point out, we are accredited. I know that's something that we're often, you know, looking at throughout the entire school year, but we have been accredited for a number of years, and we're still accredited, and we're proud of that. Last year, we had thirty-nine point eight percent of our seniors graduate with advanced studies diploma. I'd like to point out, we outperformed the division and the state average with that. Not a lot of people know that, or will claim it, but it's true. Numbers don't lie. Going back and revisiting our work keys, you can see how successful we are with that assessment. So some of our students really struggle with that writing and reading SOL. Have an opportunity to take that work keys, alternative assessment, and pass it. And it does count for an SOL score, it does count for a MAFB, it does count for one of those verified credits that our seniors need or our students need to graduate. And then again, our SOL testing starts here May eighteenth, so get ready to go into it. So each year, you know, we certainly look at our data, we look at our needs of our school, and think that we have areas of improvement. At the high school level, I don't want to say we're lucky, but our needs and improvement don't necessarily shift too much. Our focus always stays on student performance, especially in areas of reading and mathematics, or English and mathematics. We're constantly looking at our subgroups, making sure our students within those groups have the support, have the resources, and they need to be successful. Like a lot of our colleagues or our contemporaries in state, chronic absenteeism has been a big, giant area of concern for us. We've been working diligently this year to try to get kids back in school, getting them back in school on a regular basis. You know, but last year, we were very high. I don't want to jinx this, but I think we've cut that number down quite a bit. You know, we'll find out here at the end of the year, but we're optimistic, we've been doing a pretty good job with that. And then we're always looking at our graduation and completion index. We want our students graduating on time, we don't want them dropping out. And then history and science has always been something that they have to be aware of, because a lot of our resources do go into mathematics and English to support some of those struggling students, where sometimes, you know, our history and sciences, our kids struggle a little bit more, so it's a little bit more creative in how we give those supports and how we help meet those students' needs. And we've used some strategies this year, feel free to talk about those anytime you want, just call me up or pull me aside. But for the sake of time, notice how they need to go into all of that right now. Someone who interviews me every now and then during football season, they always say, "What's going on at Arcadia High School?" And our response is, "It's not what's going on, it's what's not going on." We always have a lot of stuff going on across the board. And this is just kind of a snapshot of what we've done this year. We are fortunate that some of the restrictions that have been lifted regarding COVID and student travel and interaction, we were able to do some of the things we used to do in the past. So this year, our foreign language department took our kids back over to the World Cultural Festival in Virginia Beach, was an awesome experience for our kids. I do have some teachers that are from South and Central America that were able to go with the students. It was a chance for them to share their culture and explain their life experiences with our kids. That was really an awesome opportunity. Our science department, Ms. Bosworth, Dr. Hassett-Whist, and then Mr. Chris Matthews, who teaches our CTE, CST, and robotics programs, they've been doing the Plant the Moon Challenge with NASA. So they've been doing experiments to see how to grow plants on the moon minimizing the amount of soil. So they've done that in collaboration with some of the agencies that work with NASA. They've completed the program, or completed the challenge, and now they're doing the documentation. And we actually had a crew of people, a videographer and a press person from over interviewing our students and our teachers. And that's maybe something they're going to add over to the visitor center wallets. So we're going to have kids from Eastern Shore, kids from Arcadia High School, you know, presenting and being represented for their involvement in that challenge. We had the Rock and Roll Show this year, those of you who came out, we certainly appreciate it. If you've not seen it before, you're missing out on one of the best things that we have to offer. Ms. Millie Walker did a phenomenal job, takes the randomest group of kids you could ever possibly find, puts them together, it was on a phenomenal show for two weekends, really awesome. If you haven't seen it yet, it's going to be next year, the theme is going to be places. So for example, I listen to music, constantly making a list of songs that I can incorporate places, and then randomly texting them to Ms. Walker, random times of the day, so that she can have them into her list or veto them, because my taste in music is not what she wants. Again, going back to things, getting back to normal, we kind of had the opportunity to bring kids back into the career fair this year, which was great. Ms. Karen Edwards, one of our school counselors at Arcadia, did a phenomenal job organizing that. We had kids from Arcadia, Nandua, Shing Tse, I'm not sure if the Tangier kids came over that day, I think it was kind of a bad little ride. But we were able to bring them into the school, bring in resource representatives, organizations within our community to talk to our kids, explaining to them some of the opportunities they have, as well as highlight what we offer here at Acuña County Public Schools with our CTE program, you know, both at Bachelor North and Bachelor South. We had our instructors there, you know, talking to the kids and explaining what the program consists of, but what opportunities are available for them once they graduate. We have, some of our kids in the audience today, but we have our Skills USA kids here today, who represented us very well at the district level and then at the state level. We had seven kids medal, we have one, child with an A in one. One first place, gold medal, right? Two, we got two, Miles, who's the other one? Sarah and...
Liam.
There we go. Alright, so we got two, we got one from Nandua, one from Arcadia, with both with gold medals, so very proud of that. We just had prom on Saturday, which is a big deal. You know, for a couple of years, we didn't have a prom, and that was a hot button topic here in Eastern Shore. So we had the prom, we had an off-prom accident, coordination with the Acuña County Department of Safety, Public Safety. There we go, and our fire departments, our state police, our sheriff's department. We had that at Arcadia this year, my juniors and seniors had an opportunity to see that. We had a number of our kids participate. What I thought was kind of interesting was we took the picture at the end, and most of the first responders that participated were some way, one way, connected to Arcadia High School when they were graduating, so they had students who went to Arcadia, so we're pretty proud of that. We did have leading the prom, Ms. Becky Haney organized a prom dress giveaway. So we collected forty-eight dresses, and we gave the kids an opportunity over the course of two weeks or so to shop, you know, at certain points during the day and after school. And we were able to give away twelve dresses that students wore to the prom, which I think is a pretty cool deal, if you ever tried to buy a prom dress, they're not cheap. Especially getting one of my size. Thanks folks, appreciate that. I'll be here all night. So we had a successful prom at Arcadia High School, we were going to have a red carpet mansion, that was the last year. But with the weather, it kind of aired on the side of caution, changed things up last minute, went back to a grand march. Had over two hundred kids come and participate, their families were able to come in, we didn't charge them, had a real good time, forgot that hour. And then parents went home, and the kids danced for a few hours, then we held our after-prom over at Arcadia Middle School, associated by a group of our parents. Ms. McCray, her staff, were very hospitable, allowing us to use their space and accommodating us, I want to thank her. And then, you know, we've always got sports and activities, and extracurricular events going on. We're in the middle of spring sports right now. I actually just came from Nandua, where our girls were playing, boys and girls varsity baseball, varsity softball were playing. Both very good games going on, I think softball was zero-zero when I left, baseball might have been forty-two, Arcadia up. Soccer right now, so our girls, girls softball, I think they're ranked fourth in the region, which is pretty good. We just had Hannah Parks, who was named DeMar Player of the Week last week. Our pitcher Sydney Jester, she's up for this week, so we'll see how that pans itself out. But we've had a very successful season with those young ladies. Our soccer team beat Nandua last night, which does not seem like a big deal, but the last time our boys soccer team beat Nandua was 2001, so that's twenty-two years. For those of you who are, there we go, folks, again, your own night. Those of you who can't do the math real quick, twenty-two years, that's a pretty long time, so we're pretty pleased. And I know Coach O'Brien and Coach Bissin have been working with these group of kids for the last four years. I have eleven seniors on the boys soccer team, we're ranked number one in the region, we're ranked number two in the state. So we're optimistic that we're going to be able to sustain that, get into the regional playoffs, and hopefully make a run at the state championship, which would be nice. And then also, we have track in full swing right now, and our track teams are doing very well, Coach Beal and Coach Bird. Our numbers have increased in all of our sports, which we're proud of, which means we've got kids who are academically eligible, staying out of trouble, they're going to practices, they're trying out. So we're really pleased with the fact that kids are getting involved in those extracurricular activities. Some of you may have followed our Facebook page, noticed that we had a combine chess meet the other day, on one of those early hours, where the middle school and Ching Tse brought over those kids in their chess clubs, and they met with our kids at Arcadia, and they had a chess competition, which was very well received and very well, you know, attended. So we're pleased to be offering things that for a couple of years, we couldn't offer. You know, I'm a big proponent of our kids being involved in something other than just coming to four classes and breathing every day. So what's new, you know, we've got something up our sleeves, we've got a couple of things going on. If you're not following us on the Arcadia High School Facebook page, you're missing out on one of the better things in life. After a couple of years trying to figure out how to get this thing going, because the old Facebook page was linked to somebody who's not associated with the school, you know, Facebook wouldn't give you parameters. We finally got a page up and going. So we are constantly bombarding our families, the community, their Facebook feed with the things that are going on at Arcadia High School, because sometimes people don't necessarily know what we're doing. You know, so we're our first, you know, our first cheerleader, we're trying to get our stuff out there, trying to get, highlight the positive things our kids are doing. One thing that we talked about as a staff is that a lot of our kids don't necessarily see the great things that our alumni have done. I know there's some alumni on our board that are Arcadia High School or Atlantic graduates. But Mr. Harner has taken the initiative, and he's started to create these Arcadia Fiber Bird Spotlight posters. So he's finding graduates, he's talking to former staff members, he's talking to people in the community, he's finding graduates that have gone on and done, you know, had successful careers and have done great things. And he's interviewing them, and then he's coming up with these posters, and we're displaying them in the building to the kids, and they'll go, "Hey, I know this guy, this guy's from Course Year Road, I can do something here now." Or, "This guy's from Withams, and they're doing something." So we've got that going. You know, we talked about chronic absenteeism, and Ms. Jordan and I went to a seminar in Richmond, and one of our colleagues mentioned something, she used the Acuña Hero here every day, ready and on time, and I kind of liked it, and Ms. Jordan kind of liked it. So we twisted a little bit to make it more appropriate for our high school kids. You know, so we started recognizing kids who were coming to school every single day, five days a week. And we bought a little selfie thing, and, you know, at first it was kind of cheesy, and I thought it was not going to be real well received, but it got to the point where kids were like, "I was here all week, you didn't take a picture of me." So it went from like, you know, three or four kids in the picture to, like, I got a whole hallway full of kids trying to jam their faces in there. Since I do have my Skills USA kids here, you can see Mr. Spilker's class there, maybe one, two, three, four, the fourth one. I think he had like his whole class of welders there a whole week on time, which is, you know, kudos, Mr. Spilker. Kids love your class, man. And then the last thing, you know, we did the Crystal Apple for a number of years, and that kind of ran its course. So we started something this year, you know, the Crystal Apple, we did on a monthly basis, it was the end of each month. That's kind of a long time to recognize people. So we started this past the coin, and I grew up in a military family, and a lot of our folks are familiar with the military, but they have challenge coins, and when you accomplish certain things, and you do certain stuff in your career, you get these coins, and you give them out to people who've helped you, or you can keep them as a keepsake. So we had a couple of coins made up at the start of the year. So it has our vision, or our mission statement on the back, and it just has the Firebird logo on the front. You know, it says, "Setting the standard." You know, we're not really trying to beat anyone's expectation, we're just trying to set the standard, and we have a high standard for ourselves. So we started this school year, the three administrators, myself, Ms. Seuss, and Mr. Sabatino, passed out the coin the first week on a Friday to the three teachers we thought they kind of, you know, made it a great place to be a Firebird, come to work. And then the responsibility is that each week, that coin gets passed to another person. So we're going, you know, most consistently, most weeks, unless there's something that's really, like, we didn't do it last week because we were all trying to deal with prom, but most weeks, we'd be on a Friday, it takes ten minutes. People ask why you'd be on a Friday, and the explanation is, you know, as rough as our week might be, as busy as our week might be, as gray as our week might be, no matter what, those ten minutes of a colleague telling their colleague why they make it a great day to be a Firebird, the little things they do to recognize them. We're walking out on a Friday afternoon, no matter what, laughing, crying, we're smiling, we're hugging, we're high-fiving, we're taking pictures. So it's really gained a lot of traction, it's been really positive. The staff enjoys it, they enjoy talking about their colleagues, whether it's someone who's done something huge, or it's someone who's just done something really small, and, you know, behind the scenes, helped somebody out. So we really enjoyed that, and that's something that we, you know, we've appreciated the opportunity to talk about each other in a positive way. And then, you know, as always, it's great to be a Firebird, and there's just an example. Ms. Justice, our culinary arts teacher, has twice now been recognized, she was recognized as the Association for Career Technical Education New Teacher of the Year, and the New Teacher of the Year for, I had to write it down, the Virginia Association for Teachers of Family and Consumer Sciences. You know, so she's doing phenomenal things to be recognized at the state level, which in turn, you know, is reflective of, you know, her commitment to her craft and her content. And she is an Arcadia High School graduate, so we're proud of that. Ms. Bosworth, who I mentioned earlier, who was doing the Plant the Moon, she just recently participated in the Cavan Institute for Theoretical Physics Conference in Santa Barbara, which is the sixth year that she's attended that, you know, which is a great opportunity. So she's going, and then she's bringing that stuff back to our science department. One of the things that we've worked on this year, trying to build some morale, is we've had, for lack of a better word, cooking competitions once a month, so we have different themes, we've had a cookie competition, we've had a chili competition, we did wings. We've got tacos coming up here soon, we've done pulled pork, barbecue. You know, so the staff members enter, and then, and you can't really see the pictures, but Mr. Spilker and his students have created trophies, so the person who wins, we have voting, you know, face testing and whatnot. And then they get the trophy, so that's been a real morale booster, and kind of, you know, breaks the monotony of just some of the day-to-day stuff. I would like to point out that Mr. Sabatino did win for, what did Mr. Sabatino get? That's the pulled pork.
Pork.
Pulled pork, Mr. Sabatino got pulled pork, which he was very proud of. I had to use the picture of the group, because if I would have put a picture of him by himself with his trophy, I'm not sure his smile would have fit to the screen. We've also had a couple of opportunities, as you know, you guys working with our community groups that came in during the month of February, our Black History Month, and fed our staff. We had some guests, Dr. Holden came in with Sammy Cooper and Mr. Sabatino, and spoke to Mr. Harner's history classes, kind of like about their experiences growing up on Eastern Shore before and after segregation, which I thought was really impactful. You guys recognize our wrestlers here, our coaches, we really appreciate that. Ms. Garback was recognized as the Educator of Excellence by WAVE-10. We didn't need WAVE to tell us that, she works with our EEO population and is phenomenal, please don't steal her. This Sarah Schmidt, who's in our audience, she won the gold medal at Skills USA at the state level, but more importantly, that we recognized her over this year. She's the first female in the automotive technology program to earn all of the certifications. She's considered a non-traditional student, being a female in automotive technology, so that's a huge accomplishment. Sarah, good job. Ms. Seuss, you guys saw her on CNN, she had the opportunity to go to the roundtable of the community, yeah, the roundtable, I guess, with the governor. She dropped off a bag of swag from Arcadia, wrote me a really nice letter, you know, praising the work we do as educators on Eastern Shore, not sure what you all think of him, but that's nice that he wrote a letter to us, and it was an opportunity for Ms. Seuss to really, you know, showcase again Acuña County Public Schools and Arcadia High School. The two young ladies there, Ms. Darby and Ms. Schwartz, they were the ones who spearheaded that trip, the World Cultural Festival over in Virginia Beach. And then the last one there is my athletic director, is Duson's Coach Hall. And he was recognized by the Washington Commanders at the beginning of the school year as the Football Coach of the Week. And by doing so, we had to submit an application, or an application was submitted, he didn't submit it. But one of the things that I want to highlight about Coach Hall is, when he joined us as a football coach, he's now serving also as my athletic director. But we've got Paul, Fellowship of Christian Athletes, which has been a great partnership for not only our football team, but that's expanded some of our other teams. But they have a sports camp that they offer, a multi-sports camp they offer every year at Eastern Men Night University over on the western part of the state. And this year, and each year, we've sent kids to this camp, and some have been on scholarship. This year, they've given us fifty scholarships totaling over $20,000. These guys raise this money, they bring over a charter bus, they put our kids in the charter bus, they take them there for a week. Everything's paid for, all's our kids have to do is show up. So that partnership has really flourished, not only from just that aspect, but just the mentorship, having people in our community be able to talk to our kids, be mentors for our kids, be at the games to support our kids. During football season, every road trip we take, a church across the bay sponsors our kids, they feed them, they bring them into their community hall, you know, they bless them, they give them, you know, the opportunities to talk about things that students and young adults are faced with. And it's just, we've seen a turnaround in a lot of our kids in the building. We've seen the way they've improved their behavior in the classroom, we've seen the way they've taken their studies more seriously. We have students now who do not necessarily think that going to college was something that was on their radar. Now working to get that GPA up higher, because they've made trips to college, they've had an opportunity to speak to guys who work at colleges, who are college coaches or college players. They see themselves having that opportunity, and they put that work ethic in. So that's certainly something we're proud of, and we're working on building, continuing here at Arcadia. So that was my three-minute spiel, I'm not sure I went over or not to comment. I'll open the floor to any questions. Be careful what you ask, because you might get the answer you want, or not want. But if there's enough time and place for questions, you guys are always going to be happy to.
Alright, I do want to say, really appreciate it. I mean, it's a very comprehensive start overview, but it's a lot of good things happening at Arcadia. And we do want to thank you and Mr. Bissin for working together to resolve the concerns with the school board.
Polls are in the ground.
Polls are in the ground, appreciate all the work that y'all were working together and having. Are there any questions in more bits?
First, I'd like to say, thank you, Dr. Holden, that when I grow up, I think I want to attend Arcadia High School. And I'll tell my husband. Okay.
There you go.
And my husband's a Firebird.
I think that's one safety really nice about Arcadia High School. Let me go, Ms. Turner.
Just to finish, I want to say thank you in particular for the amount of data that you provide me. I always like to know what the demographics are, and thank you for putting that up front. And then finally, I had questions about chronic absenteeism.
Yes, ma'am.
And you, it's like you anticipated my questions, so do I know more, I have to ask them because you can't answer them. Thank you.
You're welcome, yes, ma'am.
Thank you, and that was a great presentation, I very much enjoyed it, I think we all did. I know it's been a hard year for you, you're missing, I don't know, six, eight teachers.
I'm fortunate, I have a phenomenal staff that steps up every day.
Well, yeah, but that's more a work on them, because you're missing eight people out of the building. And I would just like to congratulate you and your entire staff, because you all have accomplished quite a bit. And you're doing a great job showing our shaking it up.
Thank you, Ms. Turner, appreciate it. Any questions, we appreciate it. Both of you want to have, if you want to use it as your headline, I won't complain.
I would, look, you have done an excellent job, and some of the stuff that you gave us done at Arcadia is really impressive. And keep the job up.
Thank you, Ms. Seuss. For those of you who don't know, you're keeping square at home, Mr. Reason and I both have the same birthday. Not the same year, I know we're close, we look close, but a couple of years in between us, February twenty-fourth.
Your hair is getting a little white.
I know. You're a February twenty-fourth, too?
Yeah, so am I.
Alright, we've got another phone call we got to make now. We've got to get numbers, we call each other on our birthdays. Ms. Charlie Williams is also a February twenty-fourth.
Yeah, this one, for you to say that, I think you're doing a phenomenal job. It's great to see that you're giving these students an opportunity, and your staff is doing a great job, and so we thank you. A great presentation.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Well, I could say I'm a Firebird, too.
Alright, there we go.
And like you say, good things can happen at an school, so I don't see why people always say it's a bad school. Good things happen.
I'll tell you, come spend a day with me, I'll change your mind. And then, you spend a day with me, I'll change your mind about Arcadia High School. Hold me on that one. Anyone else? You guys got any? Yeah? Nope? Good.
I have three point oh one approval of the minutes, you've had an opportunity to review the minutes, are there any concerns? Here it is, none, quite unanimous, and same, we're glad the minutes approved. You had the first reading of section five oh four, nondiscrimination policy and procedures. If you have any questions on it, sure, you can contact the central office. I have five point oh one and two, those policies, third reading, that were changed according to our concerns that we expressed last time. Are there any questions on these one of those? Alright, Karen, I have a motion to approve.
A motion to approve policies five point oh one and five point oh two. Second?
It's a move to second, all in favor? I oppose most areas. Alright, I have six point oh one, that's a well-done thing.
I'm not quite as tall as Mr. O'Shea, that's for sure, not even close. Mine probably will be quite as exciting and enthusiastic as his, but we are going to talk about our Fall 2022 and Writing 2022-2023 SOL data for the school division. For us, fall testing, just like Mr. O'Shea said, it was a good opener. It opened in December 2022 and ran through February 2023. It's still called Fall 2022 Testing, no matter what. Schools with a graduating class and test their students who are enrolled in specific SOL courses or were in need of a verified credit for graduation, it's become a really complicated system of who needs what credit. Only certain courses, we test all of our students in, biology, English eleven, usually algebra one, if they don't have a math credit, so it is a little complicated for that, because of the number of verified credits you need. The one exception that we had, the Shing Tse High School had a group of math eight students that were enrolled in a four-by-four semester, and you'll see that in the scores. Middle school students, they are only four-by-four tested in civics and economics or science eight, depending on the course they were enrolled in during the fall semester. So we look first at our student schools with a graduating class. If you look at the schools with a graduating class, Arcadia High School, Shing Tse High School, Nandua High School, and Tangier Combined School, and yes, that Tangier column stands out with a hundred percent in everything. If the number was, if the number was too small, I just put the number of students that took it, I didn't want to identify those students, obviously, at some schools. So, and the reason you're thinking of that was only one student, because those students are either in a Part One, Part Two for algebra, and they'll take that test in the spring. So it looks a little bit different for each building. Our scores are as follows for schools with a graduating class, and yes, history continues to be a concern. Scores have come up in history. And our reading, Mr. O'Shea talked about, we'll talk about a little bit more in a bit, but our work keys has tremendously helped that for reading and for writing. There are two substitute tests that are approved by VDOE. For the middle schools, we tested civics and economics and science eight, and this is the outcome for our two main middle schools. Now, our writing is a little bit different. Several years ago, VDOE changed it to a single year-long test administration that's combined into one on our computer system. The writing was administered in the fall, October. Doesn't leave you much time when school starts, you're probably thinking of that, it's really early, we just started in September. And then our spring four-by-four was in March, where, and of course, students who did not earn a verified credit, those students that didn't earn the verified credit, but just participated in a work keys business writing, a VDOE-approved substitute test. And we have had tremendous success with that. At the beginning of the year, we came up with a new plan to get as many students involved and tested. As you saw, the results were phenomenal, we're up there in the ninetieth percentile, the ninety percentage percentages for that. Our middle school students, they were administered in grade eight, that's the only time they take it. And they were administered that in March of 2023, because they are on a full-year English course. The catch is, these writing scores, and yes, writing, oh, we have to have writing. It's calculated in with English scores for accreditation. So at the high school level, you're looking at fifty-fifty when you look at English or the accreditation report. At the middle school level, because we test reading in six, seven, and eight, and then writing in eight, it turns out to be twenty-five percent of what is going in to our factor for our accreditation percentage. Here are SOL writing results for each school. Here are SOL writing results for each, uh, school. We have, um, grade eight does not have any kind of substitute test, so what they earn is what will go into the percentages. And this is the March of twenty-two-three, we just took this. Our ELC writing for raw scores, you can see, I put those on the top. And then when work keys, uh, business writing is calculated in, that is what our percentages went to. Also, I'll add that for the first time, we're looking at an integrated reading and writing field test, we just had a field test that was mandatory. We took that, um, in April, we took that every fifth grade, eighth grade, and eleventh grade. So they're looking at integrating writing into the reading test and making it, uh, one credit. Don't have much information on that now, what's coming for it, but we were involved, um, in the field test for that, so. That's where we are with that. Looking ahead, we're getting ready to get in our hottest testing time of the year, we're gonna open, uh, two weeks from today, May sixteenth, with, um, elementary reading. And then we're going on, two days later, secondary will begin on the eighteenth with reading or math, just depending on the building. We try and make schedules according to the needs of the building, how many students are taking it, um, and it just varies, uh, building by building. As you can imagine, Tangier can test more students in multiple grade levels on one day than other schools, so their schedule is definitely different, um, than other buildings. And we'll run our expected retakes right through June seventh, so we'll be going to the end of the school year with that, trying to get as many students in as possible, and we'll also give an additional opportunity for, um, work keys, uh, business writing and reading to be calculated into our scores for this year. I wanna make a note on chronic absenteeism, it was a very hot topic at the last state school board meeting. We were under the impression that it may be waived for this year, but that did not happen, it will be calculated into accreditation. Like I said, it was a very hot topic and it was, they voted against waiving it for this year, so that is, that's, uh, coming. And we'll see what, what happens with that because chronic absenteeism is an issue across the entire country, the Commonwealth as well, but not only here in Africa. Questions?
All right, are there any questions?
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Very, very happy to hear you, thank you. Okay, I have six point oh two, structural, please, a bit, and build it.
Good evening, um, I think board members just received this report Sunday night, maybe?
Yes.
Uh, it's all ours to take in, uh, we, as Acuña County Board Supervisors, retained WJ to come and do a structural analysis of Acuña Primary. Uh, the results that, from their analysis, detection, everything, uh, they put everything together, put it into this report. Um, you all saw on your board, it does say draft them. I talked to them today exclusively, the, the numbers are the numbers, draft or not, there's some words that we found that, that spelling errors and stuff like that, that will be corrected in the final version, but the raw information, the testing results and the numbers that you see now will be the same note you see in the final draft, unlike what happened previously with, uh, DJG. Um, I don't know how extensive we need to go into this tonight, I think there's gonna be some others to talk about it, but I think the, the general, what we were looking for in this report we received, it's gone through the structural elements, the structural from the foundation, exterior walls, floors, and roof. They broke it all down, they went through the testing, they went through the analysis of components, they did a lot, they removed elements of concrete, uh, got a lot of measurements on steel joists, they, uh, calculated the deterioration of some of the joists, they found some of the joists in good condition. Uh, but they broke all this down for the board and the county to review and then take next steps. They went as far in this one as to provide us with some cost estimates based on twenty-two-three dollars and their experience. Uh, there were some things that weren't included in their cost estimates that we will have to discuss as a group. But they didn't consider anything beyond general conditions, demobilization, mobilization, anything like that, because all they did was figure the cost of the actual work to be performed, not the GC costs that would be involved and all that. So I think that's about really all I can tell you on it tonight until we met with it.
All right, Mr. Bennett, I want to thank you for, that's given us that overview and the board supervision. I see, I think steps are gonna be, I would like to have this board myself, uh, meet with you, Dr. Hall, uh, and Miss O'Leary and whoever else from your shop to look at it more detailed, look very positive, that we can come up with a plan. And then once we need to come back to it, we'll wake up, we'll also, uh, meet with the, uh, chair and vice chair, uh, the board supervisors, uh, as we're going to do it, we will have a discussion, talk about the general direction and, and between. So we see that as our big step, if the board has no objection. Very good, all right.
I think I'm gonna stay up here, I think I'm next.
Yes, you are, school's safe.
Yes. Do we have a line?
Two.
Can you please, or?
Please.
Uh, would, if, would this be a public meeting, would people be allowed to attend?
No, this will be, uh, would be more likely to chance to first look at it, uh, and go through the details of it. So we could use Paul Hall's expertise as a, uh, as a engineer of mine on financial management as well as construction management. And we will go through that, and, uh, we will be coming right as, as soon as we come back to it, we'll share information, share with the public. Uh, again, this looks feasible, and we just want to develop a strategy to get there.
Thank you.
All right.
And do we have an idea when we think this, can you will be getting together, do you have an idea?
We're hoping to try to get it very short, very soon, uh, we can try to take the schedules everyone, and then, uh, matter of fact, I talked to the chair of the board supervisors, I'd also let him know what we, so we try to, uh, it's, plans is probably possible, but the appropriate.
I feel certain we'll move quicker than they did this report.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, you know, this was a report that was due back in March, you know, so.
Early March.
All right.
So the safety committee met, we met and we discussed where we go from here with the safety report. Um, they presented before this report twice, but we haven't taken any action on what to do in our next steps. So we met and Bobby's gonna talk to you about metal detectors and how much it's all a cost. And then Jack's gonna talk to you about, um, the visitor management program, those are the two top things that they talked about in that report. And, um, so.
Pretty much, well, I'm coming back, I mean, uh, so we're being, you know, we came to you all as a, as a safety committee with the recommendation to put metal detectors in all of our schools, uh, currently we've got them in the high schools and middle schools. Um, based on just everything going on and all, uh, we, we talked about it a lot, and we just felt like it was a good thing to recommend, and I think that we needed to follow that up with some cost information. We've discussed the safety committee, I've reached out to the high school principal because we wanted to make sure that we had the metal detectors in place. You know, did they have what they needed, uh, so we kind of, the high school principals got back to me, we've kind of upped the numbers based on how many they got in the, uh, middle schools now. Elementary schools, we kind of figured two per school, uh, bus entry and the, the drop off and everything. Uh, we didn't really see the need at the elementary level to go forward with that, but, uh, at the middle school level, we, we've come up that we think the need is probably gonna be six per middle school, based on that. And, uh, pretty much the same at the two high schools, if we were still kind of working with numbers at Mandua on, on two different doorways and, and how they're currently being used, um, and Shingetake, at the, uh, combined school, we were three up there, and Principal Kilman got me some information today, so we're, we're looking at three up there that probably were, might be a fourth. So we put everything together, it's, you know, it's right there, thirty-eight metal detectors. Um, I've worked with a number of companies so far, um, Garrett Metal Detectors is one of the leaders in the industry, you see their stuff a lot of places. Uh, I tried to go through subcontracting with them on pricing, and found out that the better option was go through TIPS. And TIPS is an interlocal purchasing system that we are, Acuña County Middle School is a member of, and I was, uh, they've got a K through twelve package, this is, it's walk-through metal detector, it also, the package includes a handheld lawn that goes with it. It's, uh, on cash, it's great, it can be mobile, we moved in that place and, uh, battery backup where we can move them to an outdoor event if we need to, and battery life is good for ten hours. A lot of schools, even in the safety, have gone this K twelve package, um, it runs about forty-three hundred dollars per metal, per package. So if we need thirty-eight of them, it's a hundred sixty-three thousand dollars. I'm in, before I got here, I'm in negotiations with them, trying to make them to come down to forty-one hundred dollars based on our number, and I was told I'd have to answer tomorrow, so hopefully I can tell you it's gonna be a hundred fifty-nine dollars. A hundred fifty-nine thousand, I thought about, but, um, but that's kind of where we're at on that. And, uh, you know, I still think it's, uh, the chair of the safety committee, it's something we need. Metal detectors that are in our schools right now, um, there's no parts available for them. We're, we're doing the best we can to keep them in service, uh, and we've got them in service right now, but we do have some that, that are right, that we can't do anything with, so there's some in schools, having to shift them around to meet their needs, that's not real effective. The schools, you know, if they were understaffed, that'd be one thing, most of our schools are understaffed, they don't have people that can do that. So I think this package with thirty-eight will, it's actually probably a couple more than we need, but I would rather err on the side of more than less, so.
All right, thank you very much, and we know that safety is key for all our schools. So I'm gonna ask for a motion to, uh, accept the recommendation, uh, to get Jack first. Oh, okay, we'll go, go get Jackie Park first, and then we'll come together, huh?
Um, when you were here before, thank you for the thoroughness there, when you were here before, we had a parent representative vacancy, has that been filled?
It hasn't.
Hasn't?
Principal Gardner's still working on that, he, he's, I think he's got somebody that he's hoping to have him to next week, but at this point, he has not been filled.
One of the reasons why we talked about so many is because just having one or two at each door is taking the kids so long to get in the building, and it's taking up a substantial time, so we told them that, okay, we need every child to go through because we want, that's the safety part of it. And, but now we need more, so we can have more at the doors instead of all of them just trying to open one, just trying to open two. So that's the reason why it's so many of them.
And, uh, another issue or another need identified as we work for these needs assessments with the safety and security committee is that I had an electronic visitor check-in system at every school. Um, so we surveyed the principals and asked them, what do they need to see in an electronic visitor system? And three or four of the core items are the ability to, visitors to sign in and out when they're leaving, coming and leaving the school. Uh, after they do have a successful check-in, they are printed a badge they wear at all times. Uh, the system should perform instant, uh, checks against state and DOJ sex offender lists for any positive responses. Uh, and if it comes back positive, the system will hold access, and then it will notify someone in the office to intervene, uh, with that visitor. Uh, the ability to create local custom lists to flag or report positive matches for visitors who should not be on school property or in our schools for whatever reasons, uh, and that too would then notify the front office to intervene with that visitor. The ability to see in real time how many visitors is in that school. And, uh, also, uh, the ability to integrate with the student information management system for late arrivals and early dismissals, which would just further provide more accurate data in, on the daily attendance. So that, that's the three to four primary needs that came back to us. Uh, there's many different, uh, available features in the visitor management system, uh, but we, we've identified these as a core needs. Uh, as Bobby's been working with vendors on the, uh, metal detectors, I've been working on visitor management system vendors as well. And to do all of the schools, we're looking at about fifty thousand dollars. Okay? All right, thank you for your question. What would you have heard, uh, the recommendation, and we're talking for a reason, um, maximum two hundred thirteen thousand, uh, so, did I get a motion to accept for this?
Exactly, no.
Oh, for both, metal detectors and the system, visitor management system.
All right, I motion that we accept the safety report and we purchase the needed, uh, products to, uh, to, uh, deal with, deal with the safety problems we need.
It's a move to the second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? And thank you very much. Yes.
Sorry, I have so many questions, but not sorry, talk of safety here, right? Um, bus safety, should we, will we hold and hear updates on a later date with regard to bus safety?
We was gonna, yes, like, we, we would get, uh, a report from the safety committee.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have seven point oh one, superintendent's report.
Okay, just a few things tonight, it's always a pleasure to acknowledge the accomplishments of our students. So tonight, we have some of our students and their teachers here, um, Skills USA and Family Consumer Science Group who went to state and did really, really well. So Mr. O'Shea is here and Skidwell is here from the middle school, they're the Family Consumer Science, and they're one of, she's gonna present her students. And Mr. O'Shea is one who's at, uh, Skills USA with Mr. Borowitz, and so, let's see it.
Good evening, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to showcase some of the most amazing students we have in Mandua Middle and our amazing FCCLA sponsor, Ms. Jennifer Kidwell. Uh, the students have created a presentation for you, but I am just so proud, they've made my first year as principal, another reason why I'm so excited. They, they've done an excellent, excellent job, and I can't wait for them to be able to share that with you.
I'm Jennifer Kidwell, and I'm the Family Consumer Science teacher at Mandua Middle School. Uh, we were tasked only two years ago to start an FCCLA chapter. FCCLA stands for Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America. We are the only, uh, student organization CTE-based that has the center of our core values focused on family. Because we all know that strong families can lead to people with strong careers, and strong families can lead to strong communities. So that is part of our focus, we know we're on a time constraint. I am the advisor, not a sponsor, I'm the advisor of a chapter, not a club. So this is a student-led chapter, and I'm gonna let them take it away, and we know how to be brief, and then we would like to apologize ahead of time for leaving to go home and do homework.
I'm Shelby Fitzgerald, I'm the chapter president, and we're all gonna say the creed together. One, two, three. We are the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America. We face the future with warm courage and high hopes, but we are the clear consciousness of seeking all the precious values. We're in the building of homes, homes for America's future, homes for living beings who have everything that is good and fair. Homes for true love, security, faith, and reality is not dreams. We are the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America. We face the future with warm courage and high hopes.
Hi, I'm Mariah Zavala, and this is a clothes closet. We raise money to purchase dresses and racks, um, some of them are also donated to us. The clothes are for kids that are in need or wanted them, and they also help students that have dress code issues. And we collect data each month for our clothes closet. We went to the Virginia State Fair to enter some project, uh, projects that we all made, and the theme was, um, to repurpose items, and we also made a quilt of them.
Um, Shelby Fitzgerald, Shelby Fitzgerald's the president, um, me, Maria Ramirez, vice president, and we won two out of four categories, repur- repur- repurposed textiles and home accessories. Shelby did pants, well, I did a gown with them.
And I do want to say, these girls have made invaluable, we started the chapter, we had only six members, they were in my seventh grade classes, and we'll help Ms. Kidwell, and they showed up faithfully. Shelby Fitzgerald and, uh, Maria helped recruit the new members that we have, so we went from six members to eighteen members.
On this, on this day, we got to tour Norfolk State Academy and meet other chapters and other FCCLA students, and it was an incredibly, um, I can't think of the word, it was, it was just a good day to learn about FCS and FCCLA.
On this day, we went to the oyster farm, and we like, we served soup.
A bunch of restaurants came and we served the soup. It was fun. The food was good too.
And we earned twenty-three hundred dollars in donations that night.
We also went to a state convention. This convention was a powerful learning experience and created many new opportunities for us. We walked away with three qualifying themes for FCC LA National Convention in Denver, Colorado.
These are memories who made it to nationals. From left to right, Brianna Zavala, Reagan Ray, Shelby Fitzgerald, Parker Shaw, and Antonio Baines, and Luke Ryan, Mariah. They was maybe they're here, but she also made it.
We were in the cookie cutter cafe. We had, had to make a sugar cookie that had less than ten grams of sugar and that's the board we used to present. We won first place at uh, the convention and now we get to uh, place, um, national.
Hi, it was me, Brian Isaiah. We were the closers and we did the Clothes Closet in the back of the classroom. And we all, we placed second place and then we get to get a member.
And the picture does tell a thousand words, so if you guys could go back afterwards, you will see the data that they collected every month was really powerful on solving laundry problems, clothing problems. So we'll ask you to listen later.
Me, Parker Shaw, well, my partner, Antonio Baines, created a website for Virginia State Conference. Um, and we ended up placing top thirteen in the nation. And we get to go uh, to Denver, Colorado this summer to present it in front of a group of judges.
And that's it. Brian, around this channel, this closes our meetings with that. Send, do you have any questions, comments, or concerns? If not.
I can just say it's awesome. I mean, it's really exciting.
You got to train them up.
Yes.
Um, I just had a question. Do y'all need assistance with school?
Come on, maybe we'll get O'Shea. We'll do a cooking contest. A young kid come on over. Yes, sure. We'd love for you to come visit us anytime, anytime, anytime. Comment anything, just let us know what you might lend to us, what you might be able, outside the community for somebody.
So, so if, if somebody wanted to donate or give, do they just contact the school?
Just contact the school. You can email me and we can make arrangements with that. Thank you very much. We want to thank you all. We know to be brief. Well, enjoy your evening and feel free to come by the classroom. We have a lot of things that we can uh, show you, a little more in depth than what we did tonight. Uh, Mr. Newman here said, um, said, um, that he liked the graphics. I will say all of the photography on the student website was their photography. Yes, we would, uh, when, I guess we should call it a selfie, but they would like to get a photo so they can put it on the website when they uh, compete at nationals and show the website at nationals.
You guys are very proud of yourselves. It's awesome.
That is the main reason we're here, celebrating whatever happened to school board maintenance, right?
I take it personally that they left. They got enough of me the first time around. Um, you want to put my other PowerPoint up? No, I'm just joking. Um, I'd like to invite my Skills USA instructors and students who are here, please. Come on up.
Come on, guys.
Got a handful of kids. So real quick, for those who aren't familiar, Skills USA is a partnership of students, teachers, and industry workers. Who are working together, collaborating to ensure that America has a skilled workforce. Uh, the mission of Skills USA is to empower its members to become world-class workers, leaders, and responsible American citizens. Uh, we, we work to improve the quality of the nation's work. Future skilled workforce through development of Skills USA framework, skills that include personal, workplace, and technical skills grounded in academics. So we have the opportunity at Arcadia High School to house Badger North Career Technical Center. Um, I have four instructors. I have Mr. Dale Spilker, who's responsible for welding. I have Mr. Frank Borowitz, who's responsible for automotive technology. I have Catherine De Angelis, who's responsible for cosmetology. And then I have Christopher Matthews, who's responsible for computer systems technology. Uh, on the southern end of the county at Nandua, we do house carpentry with Mr. Gorman. We offer HVAC with um, Mr. Hill, Hiller, thank you. I was getting there. And then we also offer nursing. Connie Johnson served in that role for a long time and she's leading our county and we're in the process of finding a replacement. But obvi- obviously, we have an opportunity for all of our students to experience this and then be prepared um, for life after high school. Whether they're going on college, college route, um, whether they're going to the military, whether they're going right into the workforce. Our kids are walking out the door with skills, um, and leadership abilities that can be transferable into the next phase of their life. So we competed at the district level. I think every single one of our kids that competed, if I'm correct, holy smokes, you guys have a line, it's a great. Alright, that's even better. So all of our kids who competed at the district level, I think placed, correct? I think this one works. Look at this. You guys are never going to invite me back, I swear. Last time we had a chance to speak. Um, so then we got to advance to the state. So we had seven students from Badger North who were able to compete and place. We had two gold medal winners. We have Sarah Schmidt, who's an Arcadia High School student. She's a senior. She's getting ready to graduate. Uh, and she is. Um, she is a two-time, two-time gold place, gold medal winner. Also, she is also going to continue her studies at JMU, JMU next year. She got accepted into the dance program, which she worked very hard to, so we're very proud of her and our family's very proud of her. Um, but all around, a great student, a great representative with the Skills USA program. Um, and again, a non-traditional student, um, being involved in automotive technology. So we're really super proud of her. Um, Leah Drummond, she's from Nandua High School. She's our other gold medal winner. This is the first year you've won that, correct? Absolutely, awesome. So we had two gold medal winners and then we had some silver medal winners. I know Myle Holcomb, he's a silver medal winner. He's a Shigatik student. He's also a post grad. And then you're, you're set to go after school. Where you go, you've got, I've heard you've secured.
Uh, job at Libra.
Alright, so he's going on to Libra afterwards, which is an awesome opportunity. Mr. Spilker's worked with him to get him prepared for that. So we're excited that he's having an opportunity. Um, and then we had some other, we had other, Seth Walker. There we go, Seth. Seth got a gold medal for us here. Excellent. Seth is getting ready to graduate as well. Happy to have him uh, represented here today. And then, ch-ch-ch-ch-ch, well, I think it might have been all my gold, silvers, and then we had Lacey Marlowe. She got a bronze prepared speech. Oh, can she read her speech?
Yes.
At it, girl. So Lacey, Lacey is our, 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 our winner. Want to read the speech? I can't put it on that thing. They're never going to invite us back.
In the third grade, I asked my teacher, Ms. Evans, what she wanted for Christmas. After some thought, she chuckled and said, "I wish for more time." At eight years old, I thought to myself, "That's odd. Don't we have all the time in the world?" Just a decade later, I've come to realize that is in fact not the case. Time itself is often described as an ongoing and continuous sequence of events that occur in succession from past to the present and on to the future. As time seemed to fly by, I experienced many life lessons and hardships, but it's important to note your past does not decide your future. Thanks to organizations like Skills USA, 4H, sports, and other activities, I've been able to shape what I was given into what I wanted. I've had many opportunities that I came out of with knowledge I previously did not have and picked up qualities needed to be the best version of myself. You wouldn't know this about me at first glance because it's important to me to change the generational pattern I was born into. But I was raised in a small town by a widowed mother who had four kids and barely enough funds to keep food on the table and a roof over our heads. A popular quote by Dolly Parton is, "If you don't like the path you're walking, start paving another." I started paving my own path by working fast food and cleaning jobs as well as long hours on a horse farm for years to be able to save up for the things that I wished for. Additionally, I enrolled in the automotive technology course so I would have the skills to begin working my way through college. This course has provided me and my community with opportunities we would not have been presented with otherwise. As students, we learn a lot about the trade and what it takes to pursue a career in the automotive industry. But we also gain valuable skills that will be applicable to any career path chosen. We are expected to follow guidelines similar to that of a workplace and held to a higher standard than our peers. Our abilities in terms of time management, work ethic, punctuality, and professionalism are all a few aspects put to the test daily. I'm confident knowing I've developed the workplace readiness qualities as well as the knowledge of vehicles to step right into a career. While I might have had a troubling start, this course has led me towards a future of opportunities. Now, have you ever been presented an opportunity that you wish you took but didn't? Planning something is to wait for the situation to be absolutely perfect. However, doing something starts before you are ready. Many young adults, including myself, spend more time worrying about what the end result is and not enough time focusing on taking the necessary steps needed to achieve the goals they desire. Frequently, this results in people being dissatisfied in the decisions they chose to make. When opportunities arise, it's essential to take the experiences to help expand and innovate your mindset. Taking advantage of any opportunity will always have risks. However, you can never progress in life without seeing how far you can go. If the outcome isn't what you would hope for, you're still gaining insight and experiences you previously did not have. A considerable thing I've learned is that opportunities come and go. So taking these chances when they arise, even if you might fail, will give you the knowledge needed to push you to your full potential. Taking opportunities through Skills USA, 4H, sports, and other activities has taught me the importance of teamwork, hard work, and most valuable, leadership. I believe the future is in the hands of our youth today. Leadership is usually described as the action of leading a group or organization. But achieving leadership over oneself is equally as important. Having the ability to influence and direct my thoughts and actions to successfully reach my dreams has led me to a career that I will not only be successful in, but also appreciative of the journey it takes to get there. As an aspiring business owner, possessing these leadership skills now has already begun to benefit my future as I'm able to begin making connections and gaining recognition. Having leadership skills is not only beneficial to yourself, but acts as a motivational tool for others around you, promotes communication in the workspace, and inspires others to want to be effective leaders as well. Alongside leadership is ambition, the strong desire to do or achieve something. The more you want something, the harder you work to get there. An ambitious person is someone who will work to achieve their goals in a mountain of circumstances, showing great patience and perseverance. Having both leadership and ambition go hand in hand and becoming a capable leader. While I've chosen to follow a different career path, the skills from the automotive technology course will stay with me wherever I may end up. I'm extremely grateful for the opportunities that I've taken that have shown me what is it I'm gifted in as well, what needs improved on. Skills USA follows a motto of respect, responsibility, community integrity, and service. These are all a common factor in what it takes to be a leader. More importantly than lifetime itself is the meaning and experiences gained. That year for Christmas, I gave the Sevens a small clock that I had printed extra numbers on to symbolize more time. And while I can't actually give anyone more time, I can simply say that our time is now. Thank you.
I should just let her speak for all of us. Best job, Lacey. And then we had two other students I don't think are here. Caleb Toddie, he won a bronze. And then Justin Fernandez, he won a bronze. Was Justin here? Oh, there we go. I didn't see that. Alright, come on, Justin, come on up. Justin got his bronze. He was in the technical computer applications. He is a Nandua student, um, Shigatik student. And it was information technology service. I apologize, Justin. I'm reading more things at once. Um, but he also uh, did well, placed for us, and we'd like to congratulate him. As you guys will see, we got some rock stars, just between teachers and students. Um, these guys knocked it out of the park. Really super proud of them. Um, and we're looking forward to this next group, this uh, first year group as they move into the second years. They represent us, not at the district level, but also at the uh, at the state level and then even at the national level for those kids. And I do have a couple of other kids. I have Austin Farrell. He's a welder. He's a senior. He's getting ready to graduate. He was a little bit late, uh, because he was over at Nandua meeting them today. Baseball, um, nice job. Austin, and they got it out there. The girls softball did win. They pulled it out, which is a big victory for us. Um, and I have two of Ms. De Angelis's cosmetology students here as well, um, to represent her department. So again, thanks guys for coming out and watching. You guys have any questions for them?
This is awesome. My celebration.
I know, I've exceeded my time limit. We only get limited time in life, like Lacey said, so we're going to take advantage of it. Showcase those firebirds and our friends from Nandua and Shigatik tonight. Thank you.
Today is Teacher Cremation Day and next week, I think twelve is Teacher Cremation Week. So it's written in the picture of teachers because we need to.
Okay, thank you very much. Alright, uh, item eight one oh one.
The rule of adjourned closing meeting is allowed by section two point two dash three seven one one.